Morning, everyone. We're going to get started. We have a call out of all guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail. Thank you very much for your cooperation. And if we can have a little quiet, please? Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Dr. Kevin Johnson from the Dare to Imagine Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Johnson. I would ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson. Shall we pray? God, give us leaders. A time like this demands strong minds, great hearts, true faith, and ready hands. God, give us leaders. Leaders whom the lust of office does not kill. Leaders who will represent the rich and the poor. Leaders who will work for the people and not the special interests. Leaders who will ensure that no child is left behind. And God, give us leaders who see women as valuable and not as to be punished. God, give us leaders who will work to make sure that education is funded, who will work to make sure that the poor have jobs, and who will work to make sure that Philadelphia is the best city it can be. God be now and with the mayor, the president of City Council, the City Council as a whole, and our entire city. Guide them, lead them, and direct them so that the policies they create will make our city stronger and more prosperous. This is our prayer this day. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for the inspiring words. Council be at ease. makes noise? I'd ask, could you please turn it off or turn it on silent? Thank you very much. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 17, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 17, 2016, be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the meeting of the Journal of Thursday, March 17, 2016. Stand and approve, all those say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be granted. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
This time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank and welcome everyone who has come down and taken time out of their busy day. We hope that your stay here today is a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you for your attendance. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, who represents a resolution honoring Philadelphia's nonprofit women's leaders. Would Judge Renee Cardwell Hughes and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilwoman Ginn, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Jones. And Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Each year, my office searches to figure out how we can continue to keep the celebration of Women's History Month fresh and inspiring. And last month, I was deeply inspired by Councilman Jones' recognition of African-American physicians and dentists, and thought, wow, what can my office do to make the celebration of Women's History Month special? So what I know has never been done is the lifting up of the nonprofit community as a whole, but specifically, women who are running nonprofits across the city every single day and night trying to make our city better. While I started my career in a classroom, I spent about 10, 15 years in a nonprofit community, writing proposals and funding proposals and writing youth programs and the like. And what we need to know is that the nonprofit sector is a major economic force right here in Pennsylvania, and women are doing their part every single day to make a difference. So this morning, on the occasion of Women's History Month, we are in praise of dynamic women, in my own view, very, very good people who give of themselves, share their insights, give guidance, and make our hearts so very grateful. Honoring Philadelphia's nonprofit women leaders in recognition of Women's History Month. Whereas nonprofits are an economic engine for the Philadelphia local and regional economy, and whereas nonprofits' vast economic contributions are evident in the United States GDP, according to the independent sector, nonprofits account for 5.5% of the GPD, the equivalent of $805 billion. The impact of nonprofit organizations is indisputably far-reaching and vital to the United States' economy and well-being. And whereas Judge Renee Cardwell Hughes, if she would step forward, currently serves as the CEO of the American Red Cross of Southeastern Pennsylvania. According to, prior to becoming the CEO, Judge Hughes served as a trial judge in a court of common pleas, the first judicial district of Pennsylvania, which encompasses the city of Philadelphia, as well as the trial division of the court, since her appointment to the bench in 1995 by Governor Tom Ridge. Prior to that, she was elected to serve a full tenure beginning January 1996, and re-elected in 2005 to a second term. Every single day, she's lifting up citizens when their homes get burnt out, when the city goes into an emergency crisis. The American Red Cross, under this woman's leadership, is there to make a difference.
And whereas Charmaine Matlock Turner is the president and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition, having been at the helm of UAC since March of 1999, Matlock Turner has been a tireless advocate for families and communities across the greater Philadelphia region. In addition to her community development and economic justice work, Matlock Turner is committed to improving the lives of Philadelphia's children. Nearly 20 years ago, she founded West Oak Lane Charter School. Though she specializes in these separate but intersecting fields, Matlock Turner continues to serve her community by sitting on the boards of various nonprofits and other institutions. And whereas Reverend Dr. Lorena Marshall Blake is the president of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated's Omega Omega Chapter in Philadelphia. She is vice president of Community Affairs for the Independence Blue Cross and also president of the Independence Blue Cross Foundation. Her responsibility is to ensure that decision-makers at the highest levels have a clear understanding of Blue Cross's goals and objectives and its commitment to subscribers, impacting over 3 million subscribers and the multi-billion-dollar health insurance industry as a whole.
Whereas Katzie Villa Phan is the creative director of Laos in the House. Katzie is also an award-winning spoken-word poet and writer. As one half of the group Yellow Rage, she became one of the first Asian-American females to appear on HBO's Def Comedy Jam, Def Poetry Jam. Now Villa Phan has thrown herself into Laos in the House, her multimedia project to spotlight a Southeast Asian community with a lower profile than the better-known refugees of Vietnam and Cambodia. And whereas Maxine C. Harvey is the president of the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, since its founding in 1913, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority has clearly distinguished itself as a public service organization that boldly confronts the challenges of African-Americans and hence all Americans. The chapter's commitment to the sorority's five-point programmatic thrust continues to be focused on addressing the needs of the underserved.
As an enlightened male member of council... Very dear lines. The president of the Philadelphia Graduate Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Beta Delta Zeta Chapter, Beta Delta Zeta Chapter, is the first graduate chapter of the Zeta in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the home of chap, home chapter of the Zeta founder, Arizona... Go ahead. Cleaver Simmons. Zeta Beta Sorority Incorporated was founded in January 16, 1920, at Howard University, Washington, DC, since its inception. The organization has been innovative in that it has been chronicling the number of firsts. It was the first chapter in Africa, the first to form an auxiliary chapter, and the first to be constitutionally bound to the fraternity Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. Zeta Phi Beta has chapters in hundreds of places worldwide, membership, and therefore...
Reverend Bonnie Camarda has served as Director of Partnerships for the Salvation Army of Greater Philadelphia since 1999. Born in Havana, Cuba, but having made Philadelphia her home, Reverend Camarda has been an instrumental leader in the interfaith movement in the region. Outside of her own personal ministry, Reverend Camarda leads various efforts around the city against violence and organizes workshops around HIV/AIDS prevention. She is a passionate advocate and believes the opportunity should be accessible to everyone. She's also on the board of PHA. And whereas Evelyn Marcia Hidalgo...
Woo!
That's right. Yes, yes, yes. CEO, executive director of Intercultural Family Services, Inc., began her work with the agency in 1981. Since that time, under Ms. Marcia Hidalgo's leadership, Intercultural has evolved into a family-focused, multicultural, and multipurpose agency that provides a variety of public health and human services to first-generation Americans and lifelong Philadelphians alike. She's in my district, too. Ms. Marcia Hidalgo's areas of expertise include financial management, program development and design, and cultural competency training.
Whereas Laura Wentz is the president of Philadelphia Chapter of the Coalition of Labor Union Women, CLU. The Coalition... All right. All right. The Coalition of Labor Union Women is America's only national organization for union women. The primary mission of CLU is to unify all union women in a viable organization to determine our common problems and concerns, and to develop action programs within the framework of our unions to deal effectively with our objectives. Whereas Janine L. Lozinski has been the executive director of Women Against Abuse since 2009. Women Against Abuse is the leading domestic violence advocate and service provider in Philadelphia and the largest in Pennsylvania. Women Against Abuse has, has a two-pronged mission of providing life-saving services to people experiencing domestic violence while leading the struggle to end domestic violence. Ms. Lozinski has worked for more than 22 years in the public sector, in the public benefit sector, focusing on issues of poverty, violence, and homelessness. And...
I just want you to know, I'm not the only enlightened male in here. Whereas Terry Matthews founded a charitable resource called Jaden's Voice Incorporated, where she has held the position of CEO since inception. To date, Ms. Matthews has personally injected her own resources to establish Jaden's voice and to provide services and equipments to families in need. Her enthusiasm for autism advocacy led her to her election as president of early intervention services for the state of Pennsylvania, and now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of City of Philadelphia and enlightened males, that the council does hereby honor Philadelphia's nonprofit women's leaders in recognition of Women's History Month.
Good job.
Chair recognizes... Never interrupt applause. Chair recognizes Judge Hughes for remarks.
Council President, thank you so much. And to all of council, thank you for recognizing the not-for-profit leadership in our community. I am particularly humbled to be standing up here with so many spectacular women, many of whom I work with and have worked with throughout my career. I consider Philadelphia to be the best city in the world, and I know people would debate, you know? They won't talk about London, they won't talk about Paris. No, let's talk about the real deal. This council saw fit to recognize women who constitute 47% of our workforce. The not-for-profit sector, as Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown has shared with you, has an extraordinary impact on the economic viability of our country. Women lead differently. We are inclusive. We are holistic. We are collaborative. We get it done. And we get it done earning 79 cents for every dollar y'all pay a man. It is really important that you own that fact. I am confident that no one out here with regard to gender thinks it appropriate for your child to earn less than the person sitting next to them doing the very same work. So it is, it is critical that you understand and that this council take lead on ensuring that women will be paid equally for the work that they do. It is also important to recognize that while you see extraordinary leadership here in front of you, only 4.6% of the 500 biggest companies in America are led by women. Of the Fortune 500, only 20 companies are led by women. We have a long way to go, America, a long way to go, despite the fact that women are more likely to graduate from college than men. So we come to the table well-educated. We come to the table energetic. We come to the table committed to the community and the betterment of the community. And so I call on all of you to do what we do: respect talent and let cream rise to the top.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And with that, council will be at ease. Hold on, council will not be at ease. We have one more speaker?
Counselor...
Now, you're welcome. I'm told we have one more speaker? Do we? Terry? You want? I'm sorry.
So first, I want to give honor to God for an opportunity to stand before all of you. Thank you for the council, men and women, that are here today, and after following this beautiful lady behind me, I mean, cream rises to the top. Let me explain something to you. The city of Philadelphia is in dire need. These nonprofit organizations cannot do it without talent. We are talented leaders, but we need talent and we need support. We don't need words. We don't need cameras and opportunities to be in media. We need people to get behind us, support us with their actions, with their money, with their time, and open up doors that we need in order to service the many people in Philadelphia that need our help. We do this with no reason to take a paycheck home. This is a mutual benefit to support our community, to take us to the next level. I cannot thank Councilwoman Blondell enough for the opportunity to stand before these other women and to highlight what it is that we do. We're on assignment. So you're seeing us because part of our assignment is to be seen, but there are many nonprofits that are doing things, feeding the homeless, sleeping under bridge, taking blankets to people, that I work with day in and day out, that don't get this type of recognition and they don't get seen. Please understand that we cannot do it alone, and we need all of you. And it's great to be recognized, but recognize us with your money. Thank you.
And council will now be at ease. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Our next order of business is communications. And the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Hallmark Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 160006, 160112, 160113, 160135, 160138, 160148, and 160177. And I am also today transmitting to the council the recommendations of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 160096, 160098, 160145, 160149, 160169, and 160198. And I am pleased to advise you that on March 22 and March 29, 2016, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on March 17, 2016. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution appointing Rashia Johnson to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1248 North 19th Street, 1301 through 03 North 19th Street, 1901 through 03, 1905, 1917, 1919, 1921, 1929 through 35 Ridge Avenue, including 1909 through 13 West Thompson Street, 1300 North 19th Street, and 1306 through 1310 North, North 19th Street, and 1939 through 49 Ridge Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one bill this morning.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance submitting Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions to add a new chapter entitled Gender Price Discrimination, which includes, but is not limited to, requiring the posting of prices in certain retail service establishments and making it a violation to charge different, differing prices based upon gender.
That bill will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill, one resolution, and behalf of Councilwoman Sanchez, I offer two resolutions, one of which I am the co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 28th Street, Thompson Street, 25th Street, North College Avenue, West College Avenue, and Girard Avenue.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring community legal services on its 50th anniversary.
That be on today's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance for their commitment to promoting healing and justice for victims of child sexual abuse in Philadelphia and declaring April 2016 to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia.
That will also be in today's final passes calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution approving the redevelopment...
And a non-privilege resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1248 North 19th Street, 1301 through 03 North 19th Street, 1901 through 1903 Ridge Avenue, 1905 Ridge Avenue, 1917 Ridge Avenue, 1919 Ridge Avenue, 1921 Ridge Avenue, 1929 through 35 Ridge Avenue, including 1909 through 13 West Thompson Street, 1300 North 19th Street, and 1306 through 10 North 19th Street, and 1939 through 49 Ridge Avenue.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer two bills, one resolution, and two resolutions and one bill on your behalf.
And ordinance authorizing the transfer on appropriations for fiscal 2017 within the general fund from the Department of Prisons to the Mayor Office of Housing and Community Development to support landscaping and lot cleaning jobs in the Philadelphia Reentry Employment Program for returning citizens.
That will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 191806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax by adding an exclusion from the tax for certain new businesses.
That will also be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 3908 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Notification of Business License Obligation by adding a requirement for the city to provide an explanation of the license requirements for vacant properties.
And they refer to committee.
And a non-privilege resolution calling on the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to oppose House Bill 1800 of the 2015-2016 session currently before the Committee on Labor and Industry, which amends the Workers' Compensation Act and creates unnecessary changes to a successful system.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution appointing Rashia Johnson to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority.
And that will be referred to committee.
And a non-privilege resolution appointing Councilmember Derek Green to the Philadelphia Gas Commission.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One non-privileged resolution which I'd like to speak to.
Councilman, at the time of the vote?
No, now, because I wouldn't defer it till next week.
I'm sorry. For next week, okay.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the Sheriff Department and Mortgage Foreclosure Diversion Court to impose a moratorium on all residential mortgage foreclosure sales and related ejectment actions resulting from residential mortgage foreclosures in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I submitted this with a delay of a week so that I have an opportunity to meet with stakeholders that are involved with the sheriff's sale process in the city of Philadelphia, which includes the sheriff, the courts, and relevant support agencies that are involved in the continuum of property seizure. The reason that's important to me is because we held a hearing which chronicled some of the issues related to what we have in the city of Philadelphia. Now, I respect the right of property owners to maintain their properties and collect their debts. I remember this body, working with Councilwoman Tascow, where we had moratoriums in the past which resulted in the creation of the Mortgage Diversion Program, which is a national model which has saved thousands of homes. However, everything can be improved, everything must be checked, and all things can be moved into a positive future. For some people, the time clock is the urgency of now, because people are actually losing their homes. Future residents that are off to go through this system should have an improved system. Enough issues were raised by way of who does service, whether it should be at the service of the Sheriff's Department or a private law firm. Enough issues have been raised by way of technical assistance, of being able to have people fill out in common language how to save their homes. And some of those questions have resonated to the point where we've sent out the recommendations for improvement. Want to remind council members to take a look at those recommendations as we approach the budget process so that we can help put money where our mouth is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen, and that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution and would like to speak briefly on it, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining the city services made available to families that are victims of homicide.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. The resolution that I just introduced is co-sponsored by the Chairman of Public Safety, Councilman Curtis Jones, and all members of council. Last Monday, we hosted a hearing here specifically on the issue of youth gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. We started at 10:00 AM in the morning and we ended roughly close to 7:00 PM in the evening. And all of this was to begin to look at comprehensively the issue of youth gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia, how we can do a better job in collaborating and partnering with those who are on the ground addressing the issue, but most importantly, as a city and the city agencies that work under us can do a better job collaborating and working together. And one thing that really stuck out during the hearing was oftentimes we talk about preventing the shootings that are taking place, but the hearing also gave us an opportunity to look at the victims, the people on the other side, who have to deal with the grief, people who have to deal with trying to put their lives back together when we deal with the shootings as well as the homicide and the murders. And so this will give us an opportunity to look at the other side of the coin. How are we supporting our victims and making sure that they are made whole, or at least to the best of our ability, to assist them in helping them put their lives back together? And so I just want to thank all the members of council for signing on board, being supportive of this particular resolution, and thank Councilman Curtis Jones and members of the Public Safety Committee for working with me on this issue. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmen, and that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution in recognition of World Autism Awareness Day 2016, honoring the many contributions of Dennis O'Brien as a champion of the autistic community.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Disabled and Special Needs to hold hearings regarding ongoing efforts to meet the demand for services among children and adults with autism by groups like the Philadelphia Autism Project.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar. And chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution today.
A privilege resolution recognizing April 15, 2016, as a day honoring the lifetime achievements and lasting influence of Jackie Robinson, and apologizing for the racism he faced as a player while visiting Philadelphia.
Thank you. That will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two non-privileged resolutions, one of which I'd like to be recognized on.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the First Judicial District to develop a conciliation process in coordination with the Philadelphia Department of Revenue similar to the Residential Mortgage Foreclosure Diversion Program to address the rising level of residential tax delinquency cases and to address the problems with the current system so as to prevent the unnecessary sale of owner-occupied homes.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees, entitled sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 59th Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will also be on next week's final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to mention, number one, I wanted to thank my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones Jr., for his work on addressing mortgage foreclosures here in the city of Philadelphia, which, as we know, the rate has been really astounding. And if you're one of the people who has lost your home through the mortgage foreclosure process, and the programs that we have in place have not been helpful to you, you recognize that there are still opportunities to close loopholes. And so what we hope to do, Councilman Jones and myself, working together on this, what we have hoped to do is to address a remaining loophole, which is tax foreclosures, which affect so many of our citizens who don't have an option. So if there's no mortgage on your property, you really don't have the opportunity to participate in the programs that exist today in Philadelphia. So we think that this is going to be something that's going to close that loophole and look forward to having further dialogue about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I offer two privileged resolutions, co-sponsored by my colleagues, Councilmembers Green, Jones, and Ginn. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring two-time world champion Naya Ali for winning the 2016 World Indoor Track and Field Championships.
Yeah, it'll be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution commemorating the 60th anniversary of the death of Inho Ho Oh, and the response by his parents, offering forgiveness to the teenage murderers, requesting that the juveniles receive the most generous treatment possible allowed by law, and establishing a fund to be used for their religious, educational, vocational, and social guidance.
Thank you, and that will also be on this week's final passes calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. We will now move to reports from the committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 160097 entitled an ordinance amending Section 9 to 13 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location. And Bill Number 160112 entitled an ordinance authorizing Dr. Jack Carroll for McGee Rehabilitation Hospital to construct, own, and maintain a liquid oxygen tank and the construction of an associated masonry enclosure at 1513 Ray Street. And Bill Number 160145 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Number 44 by placing on the city plan 37th Street from Market Street to Philbert Street and from Philbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from 37th Street to 38th Street north of Philbert Street, and Warren Street from 37th Street to 38th Street. And Bill Number 160146 entitled an ordinance authorizing the paving of 37th Street from Market Street to Philbert Street and from Philbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from 37th Street to 38th Street, and Warren Street from 37th Street to 38th Street. And Bill Number 160147 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Pine Street and 45th Street, Melville Street and Locust Street. And Bill Number 160148 entitled an ordinance authorizing Rachel Miller of Best Partners to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 4301 Baltimore Avenue. And Bill Number 160169 entitled an ordinance legalizing an existing six-foot wooden fence at 841 through 43 North Opel Street. Respectful reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to mit first reading this day of the seven bills that were just read into the record.
Thank you. It is moving properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160097, 160112, 160145, 160146, 160147, 160148, and 160169. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. That concludes our reports from the committee. And the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just read with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final calendar passage calendars today. 160231, 160232, 160233, 160234, 160238, 160239, 16007, 160018, 160074, and 160003. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen.
Pointing out information and clarity. One I have here, if we can check on the clarity, Bill Number 160007 has been indicated it's being held by the sponsor, which would be you, is that correct?
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Okay, so I'm going to strike that from the second reading and final passage on today's calendar.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar, we'll have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you have not already done so, you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution on the final passes calendar today, I'd ask that you sign it to the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. There's a light. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, I'd ask that you please conclude your remarks as required by the guidelines of our public comment session. You will be given three minutes to speak. Mr. Decker, would you please call the first name on the list?
Joe Dennehall. Morning. Anything on 160232, 160233, 160231, 160234?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Council evidently doesn't take my claims and allegations seriously because they continue to do to deal with the Redevelopment Authority without investigating them. At this time, I am without my home at 1038 West Wyoming due to egregious actions and inactions of this legislative body. How many decades does it take for a speedy trial? In 1991, I purchased my home, as later referred to in Oracle that even the federal government is suffering buyers. Then it came 18 years of waiting for the city to act while it received funds. I read several articles and communications from HUD that alluded to receiving up to $40 million or more extra money per year for over a decade. The newspaper reports that only $32 to $34 million was spent on Logan. Guess that's where the extra funds for the 1015 article that quotes Abernathy from the RDA, the upwards of $100 million taxpayer dollars may be given to a developer to build a mall on my home that was taken from me without payment from me. Oh, I've got to clarify that. They offered me $100. It was a three-apartment, two-storefront building that I bought as a shell for $6,000 and I improved to code. It's ridiculously outrageous that the amount of $100 was only offered by the RDA. I was required to pay for and get reimbursed for 18 years of interest, expenses, taxes, litter bills, and replacement housing. I received nothing. Federal officials said that they've given to save plenty of funds to solve this matter. If we, the people, have to solve this problem ourselves, why did we hire you? Agents and agencies designed solely to serve the people and conduct our business. You agents and agencies are bound by oath to obey and defend the Constitution and laws. Like in Flint, Michigan, the government stalls while the people suffer. Government cannot create people. People create government to serve them. Government has no rights, just judiciary duties. Paul Robeson has quoted, "The answer to injustice is not silence the critic, but to end the injustice." A firefighter choose not to fight a fire. Why is council not investigating the Redevelopment Authority? Does council not care about the... Does council not care about the people? Defund and investigate the redevelopment authority now.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment session. We will now move to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, if you can please read the title of 160231.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the sixth and twenty-fourth wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Question of the resolution.
It's been moved, thank you, it's been moved in properly second. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160231 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160232.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the thirty-seventh ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 160232 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160233.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia redevelopment authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Fairhill, East Tioga, Honey Park, urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as thirty-one fifty-six North Sixth Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 160233 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160234.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia redevelopment authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the New Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as twenty-two oh eight East Nora Street.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
And one more time, I move the adoption of the resolution, Mr. President.
Thank you. One more time, it's been moved in, in approved. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160234 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160238.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the thirty-first ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160238 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160239.
A resolution approving the amendment and assignment agreement of the Philadelphia redevelopment authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Franklin urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as one thousand one through one thousand five Vine Street, one thousand seven through one thousand eleven Vine Street, and three fourteen North Tenth Street.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160239 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160018.
An ordinance amending chapter nine, eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled landlord and tenant rent control by requiring the tenants of certain multifamily buildings be provided with a written disclosure of the building policy on smoking in individual dwelling units.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the amendment, which has been circulated to all members of council.
It's been moved in properly second. And on the amendment to 160018, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And 160018 has been amended. It will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 160074.
An ordinance amending title twenty-two of the Philadelphia Code by amending section twenty-two three oh one entitled service retirement benefits and section twenty-two four oh one entitled service connected disability retirement benefits to add new subsections requiring a specified minimum monthly benefit amount for certain retired police employee members.
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting any affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160003.
An ordinance amending section seventeen one oh seven of the Philadelphia Code entitled contractors' labor management relationships by requiring the city's labor standards unit to enforce the city's contract requirements for workforce diversity and by providing penalties for contractor failure to make good faith efforts to meet workforce diversity goals.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting any affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing congratulating and honoring community legal services on its fiftieth anniversary introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Councilwoman Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance for their commitment to promoting healing and justice for victims of child sexual abuse in Philadelphia and declaring April two thousand sixteen to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Councilwoman Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining the city services made available to families that are victims of homicide introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution in recognition of World Autism Awareness Day two thousand sixteen honoring the many contributions of Dennis O'Brien as a champion of the autistic community introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Disabled and Special Needs to hold hearings regarding ongoing efforts to meet the demand for services among children and adults with autism by groups like the Philadelphia Autism Project introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing April fifteen, two thousand sixteen as a day honoring the lifetime achievements and lasting influence of Jackie Robinson and apologizing for the racism he faced as a player while visiting Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This resolution was co-sponsored by council members Johnson, Blackwell, Greenlee, Dom, and Green, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring two-time world champion Naya Ali for winning the two thousand sixteen World Indoor Track and Field Championships introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commemorating the sixtieth anniversary of the death of Inho Oh and the response by his parents offering forgiveness to the teenage murderers requesting that the juveniles receive the most generous treatment possible allowed by law and establishing a fund to be used for their religious, educational, vocational, and social guidance introduced by Councilman Oh.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? There being none. Are there any speeches on the part of the majority? And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty, then-President Jimmy Carter signed the executive order officially establishing a Women's History Month. And his remarks included, "From the first settlers who came to our shores, from the first American Indian families who befriended them, men and women have worked together to build this nation. Too often, the women were unsung and sometimes their contributions went unnoticed." So as we close the national formal celebration of Women's History Month, the still prevailing question is, why should we? It's already been established by Judge Renee Cardwell Hughes that women make seventy-eight cents to the dollar of our male counterparts. I might add that that's gone up two cents in the last fifteen years. And if we continue at the current pace, my nineteen-year-old daughter will be seventy-five years old before we reach full parity. Furthermore, women have caught up with men in college attendance, specifically in medical law school and the PhD programs, not the case in business school. The fact remains that this attendance is not translated to gains in our pocketbooks. This is acutely evidenced by the ordinance I introduce today designed to combat gender price discrimination by cleaners that charge a woman more than a man item of, more than a like item of clothing from our male counterparts. A recent undercover report from Philadelphia CBS News showed that when a woman and a man brought nearly identical one hundred percent cotton button-down shirts in comparable sizes to dry cleaners and requested the same service, the woman was often charged at least twice as much of our male counterpart. Therefore, I submit that we must continue to claim this month not as a statement of history, but as an opportunity to remind ourselves and the nation that gender equity remains a human imperative. In other words, I'm again beating a drum, some might call it a broken record, for pay equity for women. What we know and what research supports is that when women do well, families do better. And when families thrive, communities thrive. When women are not paid well, families are not cared for. When women are kicked to the curb economically, children suffer, poverty ensues, and we as legislators are look to resolve the consequences. Fair treatment of women is an investment in the growth and development of our city. Here's the good news. Women continue to strive for total equality in the business world and have indeed made substantial progress. Today, women almost own ten million businesses in the country, which constitute thirty-six percent of American businesses nationwide. Women of color in particular have made massive gains as well. In two thousand and two, less than one million businesses were owned by women of color. In ten years, that number has tripled to three point eight million. However, when it comes to our presence and elected leadership, only twenty percent of elected national women, national leadership is women. So here's the test. What does Pennsylvania, what grade would Pennsylvania get in political leadership? It's not a rhetorical question. Pennsylvania would get a D when it comes to women in leadership behind Alabama and Mississippi. In closing, my staff and I ground ourselves always in the following quote that I came to understand when working in Harrisburg as a legislative aide, that if women are not at the table, we may indeed be on the menu. The mission continues, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I don't want to sound like a broken record either, but there's nineteen days left to file for the earned income tax credit. I just want to put that in the focus. It's April eighteenth is the deadline. And it's so important because we're talking about a hundred million dollars to forty thousand families. Quick example, single person, forty-four thousand dollars of income. Married with forty-nine thousand with two children can get up to fifty, five hundred dollars in credits for the federal government check and file back three years. Last night, I was on Bellfield Avenue speaking to a small community of maybe twenty-five parents. None of them were aware of earned income tax credit. So whatever my fellow colleagues can do, whatever the press can do, the people in the audience today, tell ten people about it. This is found money. It's a hundred million dollars. There's nothing better we can do to the forty thousand Philadelphians who deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And continue to sound like a broken record because that's a very important initiative. And thank the members for participating in the public outreach. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. As many of my fellow colleagues know, I'm a proud member of Cap Office of Attorney Incorporated. Our colors are crimson and cream, and I often chide some of my fellow members who wear other colors like purple, which I call more faded, faded crimson. But in two thousand and three, I became very close to another color, the color blue. And I say that because my son was diagnosed with autism. And so this Saturday, April second, is World Autism Awareness Day. And people all around the entire world will be wearing blue. So we light it up for blue on Saturday, April second. And when my son was diagnosed with autism, one out of every two hundred children were diagnosed with autism. Now that's one out of every sixty-eight. So something is very important to me. And autism does not discriminate. It does not make a difference whether your background, your ethnicity, your economic status. Many people are affected with this learning difference. And this increase in autism has a huge impact, not only in the world, not only in the state, but also in our city. Recently, the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia did a study on this increase in autism and how this will impact the city of Philadelphia from an economic development perspective going forward. I'm sure many of you have someone in your family, someone that you know, a colleague, a friend, a coworker, or a council member like me that has a friend that has this learning difference called autism. So as we look this Saturday, think about all the people you may have in your life that are affected by this learning difference as we light it up blue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Very important. Thank you. And thank you for your good work on that very, very special initiative. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just two brief remarks. Last evening, I worked in partnership with the Center City Residents Association to address the issue that my colleague, Councilwoman Jenny Blackwell, has been aggressively working on prior to my arrival to city council. And that's the issue of homelessness here in the city of Philadelphia. And I learned a lot of information last evening. The meeting was based upon the assault of the Supreme Court Justice Kevin Dockerty when he was downtown in Rittenhouse Square, the district in which both of us share with his family. And he was assaulted by a homeless vet. And then prior to that, there was a young man who was murdered around three o'clock in the morning during St. Patrick's Day weekend, also as a result of a homeless individual. And so as we look at the issue of homelessness here in the city of Philadelphia, particularly public safety, around how do we address the root causes of mental health and homelessness here in the city of Philadelphia? And so you have representatives from your district, project home that came out and participated. And so we want to look at, and Councilman Alan Dom also came out and led also his input regarding homelessness around the Rittenhouse Square area. And really, addressing it from a public safety perspective, but most importantly, how do we get to the root cause of alleviating homelessness and most importantly, mental health issues here in the city of Philadelphia? So it was a very eye-opening experience last evening. And so we're going to continue working on that issue, trying to find ways to get individuals who are on the street the help that they need so no one else can be harmed. And I had small run-ins with individuals. And it was based upon now that there's work being done on the Parkway and there's work being done on Love Park. Now you have more individuals who were usually using the Parkway and Love Park as their homes, panhandling aggressively all throughout different parts of Center City. So it's something that we all should be paying attention to as we move forward and to make sure that everyone is safe. And so we're going to be doing some outreach and some strategy around that because obviously, we want to make sure that people are safe when they're walking out and about Bravis and Center City and any other, any other parts of my district. But nevertheless, you should be able to walk the street without fear of anyone doing something to you, but also making sure we get to the root cause, which is helping individuals who have mental health issues. And separate from that, this evening, I mean, this afternoon at two P.M. in the caucus room, I'll be honoring roughly forty-five women throughout the Second Council Madic District as we wrap up Women's History Month. And so anyone that want to come past and greet some of those individuals, these are women who have contributed to our city in a variety of different capacities. women who have contributed to our city in a variety of different capacities, some in business, some in community service, some in politics, but continually to highlight the role that women have played, not only in the City of Philadelphia, but in society as a whole. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Thank you for your good work. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everyone or bring to your attention that it's that time every four years, we go through our selection for the formerly known as the Fairmount Park Commission, now known as the Commission on Parks and Recreation. The applications are now available. We want to make sure that everyone is aware and that it's widely circulated, and that folks are encouraged to submit an application, come out, be heard by the committee, and let us, let us hear what you have to say and what you have to offer, because this is a very important part of our city government. Applications are available online at philah.gov and phlcouncil.com. Also, they're available in person in the City Council Clerk's Office, Room 402. You can also get them in rec centers in your neighborhood, in libraries, and Fairmount Park facilities. So we want to make sure that it is as widely circulated as possible, and those hearings will be coming soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes our speeches, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.